As with every other.
He's crazy graphics, isn't he?
Oh, yeah, yeah, he's impressive.
Steven's going to graphics school. Coloring everything now.
I got the crayon really sharp.
Are y'all finished?
It's looking sharp.
You missed it.
All right, I call this special meeting with the Luray Town Council order. Let's all stand for a moment of silence, please. Councilman Shire, will you lead us in our pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all that are here and thank you listening at home, welcome. Danielle, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Dolph Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Vickers.
Here.
Mr. Shire.
Here.
Mr. Pettit.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
All right, any additions or deletions from the agenda? All right, hearing none. Continuity and government of Luray, Virginia. This meeting of the town council is being held pursuant to the April thirteenth, twenty twenty ordinance for continuity in the government of Luray. The town clerks shall read the names of the council members present and identify those who are electronically present. The town manager is responsible for receiving public comment in advance of the meeting, which may be submitted by mail, email, phone, or hand delivery by five P M. on the day of the meeting. In-person attendance and comment by the public is also permitted, subject to the limitations of the most recent executive order and phasing guidelines issued by Governor North. This meeting can be viewed live on the town's Facebook page and a recording will be available on the town's YouTube channel. YouTube. Minutes from the meeting will be posted on the town's website after being approved by the town council. Okay, the only business for this special meeting, of course, is the appointment to fill the vacant council seat. Before we get to that, I do want to know that the town appreciates the interest of the citizens that have offered to serve the community. We got several applications from very well-qualified candidates. The individual meetings with the candidates revealed that each brought a breadth of experience and knowledge, as well as a deep community spirit. The town council hopes that those candidates not selected continue to advance Luray through their service and will consider assisting the town through other opportunities available in the town's governance. Council, what is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion before, I would just like to reiterate what the mayor said. We had, well, we had four candidates and I really thought that each one was very qualified, brought unique experiences and, you know, we, I mean, honestly, if we'd have put four names in the hat and pulled out one, we would have gotten a good person, you know, and I really mean that. And I appreciate everyone to, that applied. Having said that, I would like to make a motion to appoint Stephanie Lillard, resident of Luray, as the interim appointment to the town council.
Have a motion or have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Danielle, will you call the roll?
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Shire?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Stephanie, welcome. All right, there being no further business, adjourn the special meeting. Have to hit the gavel again to go in the next me.
We're doing so well. You like it, go ahead.
Go ahead. All right, I call this work session to order. Danielle, you call the roll, please.
Mayor Dolph Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Vickers.
Here.
Mr. Shire.
Here.
Mr. Pettit.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
All right, the first item, Mr. Burke.
Yes, sir, this is simply to provide council a mid-year update on the F Y twenty twenty-one budget. Recognizing all of the challenges that COVID has presented, we wanted to give you all an update on where the town is financially. And the long and short is, is that thanks to the resourcefulness and ability of our local businesses to adjust to delivering services, we're in okay shape. We're at about where we were a year ago as far as the revenue generated. We're about halfway through the year and we're at about half of the revenue that we anticipated to have received as far as meals and lodging and sales tax. Actually, sales tax is slightly above where we thought we would be. So, the good news is, is that our businesses appear to have recognized how to continue to provide the goods and services to the community and visitors. And we hope that that will continue for the rest of the year. But the short is, is that the town is in very good financial state right now.
Thank you, Steve. As I've said before, I just want to thank the restaurants and other businesses. They come up with creative ways to keep going with curbside service and takeouts and just done a very excellent job and, of course, we'll just encourage everybody to keep buying low-point. That helps everything. All right, Mr. Burke, I think you're still up.
Can I ask a question before we move on? On the expenditure side, I'm sure some of these areas were, they're way over due to the CARES funding that was
Yes, sir.
funneled through the budget.
And unfortunately, we weren't really able to break that out. But that's part of the reason that the CARES funding in effect was about fourteen percent of our budget. And recognizing that the expenditures are where they would be with the CARES Act, we hope in the future to be able to break that out a little more so that, but the departments and their superintendents have been very good about minimizing expenses. And we feel that expenses outside of those that are CARES-related are below where we have projected them to be.
Yeah, I just, and one really stuck out, I mean, under general properties, I noticed that the employee expenses retirement is nine hundred, is that, did you transfer something into that?
That is the hazardous due pays.
Oh, that's where we transferred that into? Yeah.
Then it kind of is going to be in one spot that transfers.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you, Mary, thank you.
I apologize, I moved too quickly. Anybody else have any comments, questions?
Well, if I could, Mayor, at your seats, there's also a copy of, we are entering our F Y twenty-one, twenty-two budget season. We've drafted the budget calendar as far as goals for staff development of the budget and then working with council, the presentation of the proposed budget to you all and then working through that. So, if you have any questions, we are anticipating at your February twenty-second, I'm sorry, twenty-third work session, we'll update you as far as where we're at in the twenty twenty-one budget, where we're proposing to go in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, and if there's any specific goals or objectives that council would want to see included in the upcoming budget, if we can afford it. At this point, we are not anticipating any tax, real estate or property tax increase. We do know that there will be a requested increase in the water rates. We're at the point now where we have to replace some of the equipment, the PALE equipment at the water plant to the tune of about a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty thousand dollars. We are looking to finance that to minimize the impact to our users. But that is one of the capital improvements within the water system that we do know we need to make in the upcoming year.
Thanks, Steve. And Clement weather policy, Mr. Burke.
Yes, sir, staff have revised the Clement weather policy based on input from council at our last meeting. Basically, what we have modified is that our critical response as essential employees, if they are working on a day that we are closed, they would earn either time or overtime or compensatory time for that time that they would be working while the town hall is closed, as well as if they are, or if we have a one-hour, two-hour delay early dismissal, they would accrue that time as well. In addition, we've removed the restriction that if you're on vacation and we close the office, you would accrue that eight hours as just not a vacation or sick leave.
Any thoughts on that from the council?
That's what we. Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think it's everyone, everything we discussed, you know, thank you, Steve.
Under B, it's still, it's missing the two, are expected to report to work. Still missing that, but it does, thank you for incorporating the other changes, I think it's good. Yeah, a minor thing, obviously.
I'm sorry, under B, eight eleven, eight point eleven.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. We will make that.
Eight eleven B, yeah. It's a small thing.
And if council's okay, we would include this on your February meeting agenda for consideration.
All right, thank you, Steve. Luray Little League concession agreement, Mr. Burke.
Yes, sir. The previous season, the town had awarded the concession contract for the facilities at Dean Park to the Luray Little League. Unfortunately, due to COVID, they did not get to operate that. Our agreement with them does provide for extensions if the town approves. Staff has no issue with the town considering this request for an extension on the agreement. Our Parks and Rec superintendent is here to address any concerns or answer any questions that y'all might have.
What do y'all think? Do you like the idea of this?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I just, it's nice hearing from your mouth.
Have we been through a season with the Little League doing it?
No.
What, two years ago, the private group did it or?
Two years, the private group, this, this past year.
This year, the Little League was gonna do it, but never got to do it, okay?
Yes, yes, and we met with Little League Director Thursday of last week, looked at the contracts and his plans and discussed other Little League associated things, discussed concessions, and they're ready to go for this year, they know what their requirements are, and are really looking forward to it.
Okay, good. Thank you for being here tonight. Anybody else, everything for the Parks and Rec director? Guess we can let you go on home to your families, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right, good night.
Thanks. And again, this would be an item at your February meeting for a second, or another year extension on this agreement.
Okay. All right, item D, page one funding request, Mr. Burke.
Yes, sir, the town has received a request for, from page one to provide a donation of twenty-five thousand dollars to them to assist with ordering bulk food items. The town has two options. We could either determine or wait to identify if the federal extension of CARES Act will be providing any funding to localities to then assist them with this request. The other option, council could consider allocating some or all of their request through the funds that we had contributed to the general fund through the reimbursement of our law enforcement salaries.
Council? Any thoughts?
I think it's, I think it's very likely that there's going to be additional funding. And from what you hear, quite a bit of it's going to be directed to the localities. And I think we should just give it a little while before we take it out of the operating funds, just to see the funding occurs. Just my thought, I'm.
Yeah, we don't need a motion to table that request, do we?
Well, I mean, me ask. Well, just discuss, we're not acting on it.
Okay, okay, all right.
So, we have enough funds in the budget from the ones we didn't use that we have the twenty-five thousand now, though. Is that what I'm hearing? What, how'd you describe?
I will tiptoe on this response.
Okay.
Through the original allocation of CARES Act, we were able to offset expenses for our law enforcement salaries for two months. With the understanding that those funds could be allocated by town council for other expenses, we're simply not, and the only reason I have a little trepidation is that we're not far enough into the rest of the year to determine if there's going to be any other impact due to COVID on the revenue to the town. Right now, we're in a good stead and I, and if the revenues continue the way that they have been trending, we should be in a position to have met the anticipated revenue for the F Y twenty-one budget year. That said, tomorrow, things could change. So, if you're, yes and no, I guess is the best I can respond.
I've got a better handle on it, yeah.
And what?
It's only insurance we have right now of what might happen in the future is what we have.
Yes, sir, and staff would recommend to wait a month or two. We will report to council as soon as we've gotten any confirmation on what the, if any, the second go-around of CARES Act might be presenting to council, to the town. And at that point, we'll be in a better position to say that we can either provide it through additional CARES funding or through general front revenue.
And remind us, Steve, how much did we transfer in there?
About a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It was about two months of our police salaries.
That's a lot, so I think we'll be, we'll have something there to.
Yes, sir.
Be able to divest. I hope so, because I think really if we're looking at the spirit of what this thing is, it's, yes, maybe we can tiptoe around the letters as we're doing, but I'd like us to focus on the spirit of what this is about and make sure we're giving back to our community. One thing I'd like to see is if we're, if we are going to table this, I'd like to better understand what they're doing with the funds. I know it says bulk food ordering, but that doesn't really, doesn't really narrow it down for me. I know that they had the program they were doing through Liz, so just wanted to better understand how these funds would be used.
I can ask for Shaffer for.
That'd be great.
You're not still doing that, or are they still doing that?
I don't believe so, no, I think that.
Yeah, the other thing, if we're gonna, if we're gonna contribute, if we're gonna end up contributing this money to nonprofits, I think we need to announce that. And so, all the nonprofits have an opportunity to try to seize some of the money. I mean, just to single out a non, I mean, not taking anything away from page one, they do a wonderful job. And I donate to them personally and also to some of the civic groups I'm in. But, you know, we've said all along that when council starts deciding where we're going to spend the tax dollars in terms of nonprofits, I think, I think we need to be really transparent with that and give all the nonprofits an opportunity.
I'd like to mention one, since we're on that topic, and I know I'm new to this, but as a citizen for years, as I've watched the, one thing that I've been curious about, and maybe it's being done and it just wasn't obvious to the taxpayer or the citizen. But I know from like on the business side, when the CARES Act funding was distributed to small business, it was like twenty-five hundred dollars. And the businesses had to apply and they had to submit their year's tax return, they had to submit quarterly reports, they'd have to show profits, they'd have to show payroll, all this for simply twenty-five hundred. On our nonprofits, which I'm in favor of supporting our nonprofits, it's not that, but I think we need also to either, whether it be the Form nine ninety, which is a tax form that nonprofits provide, also a breakdown on a year's tax return such as the nine ninety, or a breakdown on a treasures report as far as where those funds go. Because some nonprofits, such as Luray Fire Department, there's, there's no paid staff, it is totally volunteer. You know, it's, it's zero pay. Other nonprofits have salary positions, there's pay, they're, they're more complicated than just, you know, one hundred percent volunteer organization. So, I think it would be wise that we do just what we're saying here, that in the future, as we do this, we set a standard as far as how we evaluate and look at nonprofits, how it's being spent, plus with the, how they're spending other funds as well to determine.
Yeah, this, these funds are a little unique in that they're, you know, we were able to transfer them in from some of the CARES funding that we received. But as a general rule, we had pretty much stopped contributing to nonprofits because the thought being that, you know, if the taxpayers want to contribute to a nonprofit, it should be the taxpayer's decision to contribute to that nonprofit. Instead of us choosing the nonprofit to spend their tax dollars on. So, this money's a little different because it came from the CARES funding. So, I think in this case, a good chunk of it should go to the nonprofits. But I still think we need to be very open and transparent with it when we, before we start devving it out like that.
I agree with Jerry on that. Another thing, if, another round of funding, just to put a bug in everyone's ear, I would like to see us focus more on revenue recognition rather than asking for P and L's or like really going in-depth on a business. You know, like you said, we're handing out twenty-five hundred dollars to a business and show us everything. It seems, it seems a little excessive, rather than, rather than just having like a point-of-sale report that's going to show what their actual revenue is, just so we can get a sense of gross sales. I know for most municipalities, and likewise for PPP, you just need to verify that you have a twenty-five percent reduction in gross sales, that's it, that's really all they need. The second round, it's more in-depth, they actually are asking for P and L's, but we don't need that for a twenty-five hundred dollar grant. Just something to consider if that comes about, if we're looking at that in the future.
All right, so I get, we're just gonna hold off for a while, make us see what happens with the newest center payments or.
Before we hop off of that subject, Lois give a sense of how they're doing, I mean, are they?
She'd indicated that they have received funding through CARES and other sources, so they were.
They're able to meet demand right now, do we have a sense of that?
The intent of the request had been that they were making due, but they wanted to be able to bulk up for the rest, and that was the intent of the funding request.
Understood, so what we reimburse the police salaries for, we anticipate being over in the budget, kind of come to the end? Okay, just make sure I understood that correctly. Well, I think they, you know, they have a pretty good track record and if they're, soon as this is later, I think there's probably a need, I think it'd be well-spent. So, I would rather we kind of get to it sooner rather than later, possible for sure. But I don't have any problem with waiting up, you know, a month or two.
Will you reply to her for the?
Yes, sir.
That's what we're gonna do, Steve.
Yes, sir, I'll let her know that we will consider that request from some source of funding and that we are looking for additional information on how we can spend.
Thank you. All right, Steve, Mr. Burke, planning commission report.
Yes, sir, every year, the planning commission provides council an update on the planning and zoning efforts in the town. The draft of, well, the, the report that they had approved at their last meeting is provided for y'all. And if you have any questions, I can, I can address them. Otherwise, we would have y'all consider accepting this at your February meeting.
We'll notice one thing, that certificate of occupancy's have gone up quite a bit in twenty twenty, and that's probably an indication of new construction for three, two, eleven. So, it'd be interesting to see what twenty twenty-one holds as far as that goes.
We're hoping that that trend continues and we have seen that the number of new homes starts.
Any questions for Mr. Burke on the planning commission discussion report? All right, let's move on, I think this is me. Of course, at the last meeting, I think I recommended, I thought it would be a great idea if we had a board retreat, council retreat, excuse me. I still think it's a good idea, is everybody in agreement on that?
I'm in.
Are you running paddle boats?
It's gonna be a team bonding.
Yeah, team building, yeah.
No, I think it sounds good.
I would like to do it as soon as possible. I have talked with the MEMS on the day, I, again, would like to do it to MEMS and we can do it other places, but the first date they have is February sixth, which is a Saturday. Does that suit everybody's calendar? Ms. Lillard, does that suit your calendar? That's the answer, that's what we need to hear. Yeah, that's the spirit. Y'all need to take lessons already.
February sixth?
February sixth.
I think so, what time?
Well, that's what we need to decide, I guess the details, do y'all want to do it like a morning meeting, an afternoon meeting, or?
I like the idea of you got a, you know, skeleton agenda here.
Yeah.
It's gonna make me think for a while, what are my short-term goals? This is good. It's gonna be opening to like brainstorming type stuff, right, in the retreat?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, there's somewhat of an agenda, but, yeah, it's not gonna be.
But it's like free discussion, whatnot.
Well, yeah, there will be some of that, sure.
You think we'll come out with some type of announcements at the end of it or not?
No, 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 that's not really what we're looking forward to, Ron. It's just kind of a, to get together and figure out what we want to go, where to go from here and just do a little planning and again, set goals and objectives. Y'all want to do a morning meeting?
I think your ten o'clock, your schedule looks good.
There's a, there's a break in there somewhere.
Well, I'm assuming we can have a lunch, is that?
Okay.
And hopefully finished by early afternoon, that would be my goal.
That's good. I mean, should we bring specific issues, I mean, I know I kind of sense.
Well, it's gonna be somewhat broad, but I think some issues we could probably get into, yeah. I mean, some things we might have to bring back to work sessions and things like that. Any questions on that? Right, I'll see you all at ten o'clock, February sixth at the MEMS, looking forward to it. All right, the next item, and, you know, I think when we were all running for office back in November, one of the things we talked about was a town hall meeting. I think we all agreed that that was maybe good to get that going or get it started, get it going again. Obviously, with COVID, nobody has a timeline as to when we can start a real town hall meeting. So, Steve has come up, I think he bartered from some other towns, they're having, having what's called a town listening session. It's, of course, all virtual, we would just set a time, say an hour, and just let our citizens call in and tell us what they want us to do, what they want us, our objectives, or get our goals for the year. I'm sure we'll get some, I'm sure we'll get some wonderful.
We'll be told what they want to do.
Hope they're nice. But, I mean, does, what are your thoughts on this?
How's that work, is that, is it a public meeting and then they're just like?
No, they're just.
Radio show calling in?
No, it would just be a, you know, people would just call in, it wouldn't be a dialogue, we wouldn't have a conversation, we would just, you know, what do you want?
Would be, would be a call meeting. It would be a call, public meeting.
People would just call in saying, I want, I want a dog park or I want a pool or I want, I don't know, whatever they want. Some things we may be able to, be able to handle right away, some things may be simple, but probably most of them.
So, we do it virtually, in other words, we'll just do a, we'll convene here and just, they'll be calling in, we'll see who we're talking, huh? Yeah, I think that's good.
I mean, it's sort of like, you know, a public comment session at the council. You know, having talked to so many people when I ran that, hey, I've got, you know, answers to everything, I hope. Maybe not, but.
Well, again, like we really won't have much dialogue that night.
Right.
We may just take their concerns, their topics and all, and then maybe if we do this again, we might focus on one specific item. Or when we, when we can actually go into real town hall meetings, we may have a real town hall meeting specifically of what, some different items. But right now, we're just, it's kind of a wish list, fact gathering, whatever you want to call it.
When I first read about this, I was thinking it was also an opportunity for people to call and ask questions about, to understand an ordinance better, some of the sign things can get kind of complicated. I mean, I think it was a learning experience for the public.
Well, I don't.
If that's the case, then we would need to be able to have people here that can answer the questions.
Well, again, I don't think for this type thing, we really want to be in a dialogue or answering questions or getting into discussion with folks. Now, if someone is concerned about the sign ordinance.
You want people to keep talking individually and just call in to the.
Yeah, just comment or a thought or an idea or a wish, and if they have, again, if they have a discussion. Yeah, just comment, or a thought, or an idea, or a wish, and if they have, again, if they have a discussion about the sign ordinance, maybe we can have Mr. Burke or Brian call them and talk about if they have concerns about the sign. Again, we're not gonna have to put everything off until the council meeting, so some things we might be able to handle right away.
Do you wanna shape the purpose of it at all? Or do you want it to be very much open and just like literally citizen, just a citizen comment? Or do you wanna like shape it as?
That will be up to you all.
Only thing I ask is that we give it a definite time limit. I mean, things can get out of hand sometimes.
Well, I think if they just call in with a simple comment or suggestion, that should not take.
No, but if you have a thousand people call, you know, let's say we will meet for this amount of time, and then the next time we meet, we'll pick it up again. I don't want people thinking they can just keep on talking forever.
One thing that I've seen in other communities, yes, you would set up a time of, okay, we'll have a listening session from five thirty to seven.
Okay.
If for any reason we're inundated and we're not able to receive everything, we could then follow up with a second date if there is enough demand. So it is purely flexible, and what I've seen in other loca, locations is that staff would then follow up if there's specific questions about, why is that line yellow in the street? Why is there a blue line in front of town hall? Where we would put out a, basically a public notice so that anyone and everyone would be receiving the same information about any specific answers. If there's things that are tailored to, you know, there's a problem with my water meter, we would follow up individually with that individual. But if it's questions that, even if they're fairly general, but it's better if we're putting out a response so that everyone knows. It's one of those, you may not think of a question until you hear that question, and you may want the response. So if we put out a public response for generalized questions, that way it helps all of our residents.
So is this gonna be, what's the format? I mean, what's the venue? Is it gonna be a Facebook kind of thing, or is it gonna be?
If council desires, yes, sir, we could broadcast it on Facebook, we could.
But are they gonna be required to give their names and addresses and? Well, because what you're gonna get is people calling in who are just fictitious.
And again, if it's.
You had, I don't, you mentioned on your, in your proposal, possibly a shelter at Dean Park, Ground Team Park or something, which I realize right now with COVID, no, but if, when we get to the point that we can have more interaction, I like that concept because it sort of separates it from this formal setting as far as us here and people there. If the location was a shelter at Ground Team Park after the pandemic clears it up, I think we'd get a better interaction or just a feeling from that than the cold phone call message, especially if someone's not identifying on the other end. I think that could lead to.
But if they're, if they're doing it through a venue, they're actually gonna have, will they actually be speaking, we'll see them speaking?
If, yes, what we can do is, we can have it so that they have to register to participate, and that way we'll have their information, and then we can provide them a link so that they can either be seen or, and/or heard.
It'll be just like a big Zoom meeting.
Basically, yes, sir.
Yeah.
I don't see why we couldn't ask their name and address.
It's your meeting, and typically for public comment, we do ask for name and, and address. So we can request that in order to provide the link to the meeting.
And they'll have to comment, can they just, they'll be able, will they be able just to put comments on Facebook?
Well, the way that our system is set up, what we could do, that everyone has the ability to speak simultaneously like a Zoom meeting. We can freeze everybody out, but I think if we're, if we're able to register people, what we can do is have the mayor or a member of council just go down a list of people that have signed up and say, you know.
So they'll be in a, like a Zoom meeting, they'll be in a waiting room, and you'll let them in, or whoever the?
They'll all be here, and then we just simply say, Ms. Jones, Mr. Smith, you know, and, you know, what is your concern?
I think there'll be some type of time limit. Some people can go on.
And again, it would be your, it would be council's meeting, and so we can, we could structure how you feel comfortable with hosting it.
Yeah, I like the idea. I'm still a little confused of, you know, kind of, I mean, I'm in public meetings all the time. I just think, you know, having a listening session is a great idea. I'm always willing to listen and hear folks out. I just think we kind of need to massage this idea a little more to figure out exactly the purpose and, you know, what we expect. You know, there are a lot of different avenues that this could go down, that, you know, some could be very productive and some could be very unproductive. So I think we need to, we need to be, you know, just careful that we, you know, we know while we're doing it and make it a form that, you know, is useful to the, you know, the folks who have questions or concerns and for us as well.
Yeah, even if you, even simple things like framing it in the context of short and long-term goals for the town, that's very open-ended, but at least then it's not like airing of grievances, you know, or something of that.
And if everybody has a grievance, I mean, you know.
And a grievance, you can turn it into a goal, right, like where it's a?
Any of us, pretty accessible.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I mean, I'm accessible, so, yeah, I just think we'd probably talk a little more about kind of, you know, maybe the process and what we hope to achieve from it. And again, like Joey said, maybe narrowing it down to, maybe after we come out of the, you know, the, not the work session, but the retreat at the mems, and maybe there's something we can talk about too. Because I know Jerry had talked about it before. I think it's a good idea, but I just think we wanna kind of be a little more specific and not lead ourselves into a situation where, you know, maybe it's not productive for us or the people who participate.
Well, it's not perfect, but I agree with Jason. Something like over in one of the shelters would be much nicer, but. And I don't think we, I don't think we should wait that long. I think we need to get something going. Again, we can talk about it more at the retreat, that'd be fun. All right, any, I think that's all on the agenda. Any council comments?
So we'll be having the retreat February sixth?
February sixth, ten o'clock.
We'll send out a special meeting.
It is a special meeting, so, I mean, if public wants to attend, obviously they can. I mean, that, just to be clear. Right, right, well, I don't know if we can get them lunch or not, but if they're, if they're welcome to attend and be there, and I'm looking forward to it, so good.
Assuming this thing ever ends, and whatever passed COVID, or close enough to it, I think we ought to consider doing some kind of like big town party or ice cream social or something just to bring everyone together after all this ends.
A big concert downtown.
Big concerts, just something, I don't know.
I like that idea a lot.
Great idea.
Be fun, wouldn't it, like?
Yeah.
Actually see, you know, be able to lower this mask and see smiling faces again at some point, so.
Short-term goal.
Short-term goal, hoping, hoping the long-term goal.
All right, anybody else? All right, meeting adjourned.